An addition, if you read your email, we have an addition to the informational section of the agenda. It will be 4.04 by Mr. John Kraus. It will be a report on school safety, looking at the tragic events that happened.
Well, thank you all for your support. Mrs. Eaton, as you know, started her career, you may not know, in the DeSoto School District. And after being there for 12 years, she blessed Farmington by becoming a part of our organization for 17 years before she retired at the end of year 29 last year. Mrs. Eaton has not given up teaching though. She continues at St. Joseph Catholic Church in Farmington and their school there. And she's teaching 3rd grade, which is familiar territory for. Throughout her tenure as a teacher in the public school system, she also taught first, 3rd, and 4th grade. During her career, she didn't only just meet the demands and meet them with creative innovation. She also had to implement a lot of new curriculum over the years and see a lot of changes there. And was a strong leader on our ELA committee to make sure that our summatus where really need to be, any curriculum changes that came on the pike, she was right in the middle of. And dove in, never hesitated on that, so we thank her for that. Her foundation of knowledge, her wealth of experience, everything just really kind of elevated where we were in the Farmington School District at the time. Andrea's colleagues have noted how open and giving of an individual that she is. I say is, it says was, sometimes but, you know, she is. She'll help in any situation. She always shared educational and motivational and inspirational resources anytime she could. She collaborated with her peers. And if anytime that anybody said that was a struggling learner, she made sure to reach out with any ideas and say, "Well, I've been doing this, have you tried this?" And it didn't matter the grade level. All grade levels went to her for advice and for ideas on how to reach our learners. She was also part of the integration of technology, whether it was the iPads or the Chromebooks, any new initiative that Farmington had for technology. She spearheaded that and dove in pilot programs on that. She also participated in many hours of professional development, as we do, and worked on creative instructional practices all around. Her toolbox was never empty and she was always willing to try new things with her students. Let's see, we know that she was very flexible in her teaching. We'd go to her a lot with challenges and she adjusted her day-to-day instruction whenever necessary to accommodate her students' needs. She possesses strong leadership skills, helped everyone around her, and really brought out the strengths and potential in all the staff members that worked with her. She always had strong relationships with her students, with her parents. And that was a huge strength I always saw in Andrea. She never hesitated to call a parent, whether positive or sometimes the things parents don't want to hear. She always reached out, kept in connection with them. And that just really, I think, helped the students to grow, even if they felt like they were stuck in a place. You know, her reaching out and keeping parents on the same page really helped. Her students described her as someone who's funny, caring, and always attentive to their needs as well. Both Andrea's children, personal children, went through the Farmington School District. And she's been a part of booster clubs, she's been a part of senior class of 2017 funderies or things like that, volunteering all the time to help organize the senior prom. She also volunteers at the pet adoption center. And then, of course, a lot of hours spent substituting at PSR and things in the Catholic Church because she's a strong and active member there. She's an avid runner. She always participates in the Walker-Johns Run every year to help battle against cancer. So, we just wanted to take a few minutes to celebrate all the hard work that you did in the 29 years of public education and as you're continuing on in the private school. And I know that the staff and parents and students at Washington Franklin are very thankful that you graced our doors and provided all the knowledge and hope that you did something. Thank you very much. We want to present you with our Feature Teacher Award. Yay! The chance to perform here, they want to congratulate us too. We have one more person recognized tonight. It's a surprise to her. It's always a little bit challenging to get someone to come under false pretenses, especially if I'm not a good tipper. But I didn't have to. When I approached this person about attending the board meeting to support Washington Franklin night, she said, "I've been wanting to volunteer to come," who knows, I didn't even have to make it a fifth. So, Ms. Holly Green, would you come join me up here? Wow, I think I should dress better now. I thought he was going to be listening. I was thinking, I know, sorry. I was kind of thinking it's not fair to her because then she doesn't get to my family and people in, but it's always kind of fun to surprise and that's why a lot of our teachers also showed up because we have two wonderful people supporting it. So, we want to recognize you as our Heartland Hero. And this past year, Washington Franklin's been blessed to being Holly on our parent volunteer organization. And both her son Tucker and Cooper have moved and attended our school now. And it was kind of funny because when I was telling one of our newer secretaries to our building about Ms. Green, you know, joining this year, they're like, "Hasn't always been here?" Because that's how active she's been at our school. So, she started off as headroom parents, room parents in our school. And it wasn't too long before she made the mistake of telling the office staff, "Hey, if there's ever anything you need." Well, that's the only opening we need in our school. She stepped in and quickly became a huge part of everything we do there, from book fairs to heading up what we call our Penguin Patch Holiday Shop, which, my goodness, that was a lot of fun. I'm glad you're a fan. She's convinced me we need to run it again next year because, I'll be honest, wasn't so sure, you know, because it is a lot of work to get everything stocked yet, man the hours there, help kids shop. Tried to explain to her, I don't quite have enough money to come through, and I saw her reach in her pocketbook a few times on that one herself. She placed orders, helped with all the finances of it. And she also has made sure, you know, that those events really lead to us bringing in money so that kids can have special assemblies, field trips, all the upcoming events that we're having, getting more books and resources for our library, things like that. So, it's been a huge help. We've also noticed that, she notices in classroom when kids need something, whether it's, "Oh, the teachers have snacks," and these things like that, or making extra Valentine's Day boxes because she knows if you were going to forget theirs, and bringing them in for anybody that needs it. She takes loving care of our staff. Parent-teacher conferences, she helped run our Character Council, getting them to serve our students, and then brought in salads on her own. She hears, "Oh, we're having a fall festival night," and she's like, "You need more chili?" And brings more chili. I mean, you name it, she's walking through that door with it. So, she's invested a lot of time and energy into our school. But outside of school, she's also the owner and operator of the Green Acres Residential Care Facility here in Farmington. And that residential facility specializes in care for women with intellectual disabilities. And this all-girl facility participates in a lot of activities outside. I know the bowling event that I saw, I see a prom's coming up, attending Cardinal games, you name it, she's making sure that they get the best experiences. She's worked hard to create a residential facility where the staff truly embody the idea of, "Our residents don't live in our workplace, we work in their home." So, she's done a lot, both in and out of school, to make sure that the Farmington community's getting what they need. And even though one's just leaving us and just left us, and one's just joined us, Washington Franklin is definitely grateful to both of tonight's award recipients for their hard work and dedication that they have put into our staff and students. So, I want to present you with the Heartland Hero Award, Ms. Holly. And we want to thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Some of you have heard a little bit of this in the past, some of you have. So, if you want to glance at that for a second or so, kind of get an idea. You know, I spoke to you about this last year, but obviously with the events in Florida last week, it's a good idea. It's always a good idea to review what we're doing. And so, if you look at what this, this is just a slide from one of the presentations that I often do with teachers, and it kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing district-wide with safety and security. So, on the left-hand side, we have our reactive proponents, which include emergency response. We do a lot of training, a lot of drilling with emergency response. Our crisis intervention is our emotional plan, emotional crisis, primarily with our counselors. Like or not, our discipline is part of our safety, security, but it's reactive. And then our restraint portion of de-escalation. If you look on the right-hand side, what we've tried to do in the last several years has become much more proactive with what we're doing. At the top of that list is character development, that is very much tied into what we're doing district-wide in terms of creating social, emotional well-being, and a place where students want to come and feel safe and feel like they belong. And that in and of itself is very much a proactive piece to try and, you know, if you look at the events that have happened around the country in the last several years, oftentimes it's that student that has been isolated or disengaged or disenfranchised or they become a justice collector for others. And so, with that character development, giving them that, a place where they're, where they feel like they belong. Along with that is our, we've started to move into more restorative discipline. We've got several administrators that are going to a conference coming up, the end of March, I believe it is. And with restorative discipline, basically what we're talking about there is just, rather than managing those student behaviors and handing out discipline and moving on because we all don't have enough time, it's having those difficult conversations with kids and following up, making sure that we all understand that we, hey, we all have made mistakes, let's learn from it and get better. Still accountable, we're still going to hold you responsible for it, but we're going to get better because of it. The de-escalation is, you know, with all new teachers now, we're offering the de-escalation with subs, we're offering the de-escalation. When I first started teaching, when they asked me if I wanted to do that, I wasn't real gummed, oh, on it. But it fits very nicely under the safety umbrella. And basically, that's just learning to communicate and doing a better job so that people actually hear what you're saying. It's dealing with, you know, non-verbal communication, paraverbal communication, and understanding why we feel the way we do when we're communicating, and hopefully slowing it down so that we can get into human brain rather than always focusing or always working from the limbic system or general brain. Behavioral risk assessment is huge. It's another big piece of what we're doing on the proactive side that continues to get better year after year. For those of you that don't know, with the risk assessment, basically any student that makes a comment that can be perceived as threatening or exhibits a pattern of behaviors that could be perceived as threatening, we come in and we have a process. Is it foolproof? No, but it very much puts us where we're uniform and objective across the board and trying to make decisions on where that student's at, where they were coming from when they exhibited the behavior that they did. And then, of course, with the MTSS right now deals primarily with academics, we're just in the beginning stages of that. But it all ties together to, you know, with the risk assessment, we identify what the needs are for that student. Even that 3rd grader that was just escalated and wanted whatever was being done at the time to stop, they're not on a path to violence, but there may be something that we're missing. And when we team up and say, "All right, what's going on here? What's truly the root of the problem?" Then we're putting plans together. And basically, as we get deeper and deeper into the MTSS, that's what we're doing, it's probably solving. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing, a very, very quick rundown. Some of the things that we need to do better with, we've got to do a better job of educating parents. Right now, we've got a lot of scared students and we've got a lot of scared parents. And we've got to do a better job of going out and educating to alleviate at least some of that, that, you know, we've got some really good things going and we're going to care for your students. You know, I've had questions, I just got back from the state tournament today, but I had an email waiting for me on Sunday wanting to talk about, you know, a procedure or a policy where no backpacks. You know, I had some girls pull me into the bank today and wanted to talk about armed teachers. And those are conversations that need to have. We're going to have some conversations on Friday with each of the different classes, some roundtable-type discussions. But ultimately, you know, when I was talking to Angie before we started today, it ultimately comes down to, we've got to have those reactive pieces, but we can't spend enough money to keep things from happening. It's not going to happen. But when we create those environments and those cultures where, you know, kids are safe, emotionally safe, we're less, much less likely, and we're going to maximize what they're capable of doing in the classroom. So, we're going to continue to do that, and we're going to continue to do a better job of educating parents and students on what we're doing. The one big thing that we do need to do with emergency responses is train and educate parents on reunification. If we do have an event, this is how we're going to return your students to you because it'll be a mess. And so, we need to do a better job with that. We're going to be creating, middle school has used it for the last several years, we have videos specifically with active shooter-intruder response that they show. We're going to hopefully put one together at the high school. We've got to do a better job training the high school students across the board, this is how we would respond if you're left on your own, if the teacher's incapacitated, this is what we need to do. And then, the last thing we've talked about before and hasn't been done but needs to be done is creation of an anonymous tip line. We've got to have something in place, whether it's bowling or whether it's drug substance use abuse, or whether it's a threat of some type of violence that, and the thing about it is, as relationships grow, those students are becoming much more apt to come and talk to you. And I feel like it's ratting it out, ratting someone out, but that hotline's got to be put in place. And so, hopefully, working with Andy, we can get something in place with that pretty soon. Right now, it's just about, a little bit about damage control and making people feel comfortable. You know, we're having lots of conversations with parents, we're going to be having those conversations, I know middle school had conversations today, I believe. Letter was sent out, kind of where we're at. And then, the high school, you know, we're going to have those conversations on Friday. We've also been very diligent and very busy with following up on any and all reports and doing what we do. It's a timely process sometimes, and it's not foolproof, but I think it puts us in a pretty good space, place. I know that's quick, it's just kind of a lowdown on what we're doing, so I, at this time, give you guys opportunities, if you have specific questions, I can answer. Is that kind of what you were looking for? Yes, okay. We're in a good place. We're in a good place. We're a very proactive district, and I appreciate what the administrators do and I appreciate what you guys allow for. And I think the community would too, once they completely understand what we're doing.
We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
We have policy IFA 8, which is going onto 30-day review. And then, we have policy IGVE, which is completed, it's 30-day reviews, we need a motion and a second to approve that. Have a motion?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have a couple presentations. We'll start with Mrs. Green, please. Parents as teachers. I have, how many?
I didn't have, I just said a short presentation.
I say, it doesn't look like enough.
We all know how I can get about 18, so I will try to definitely keep a point on. I think that's why I gave you guys lots of copies of stuff so we can follow along. But yeah, it's so exciting to be here again. So much change has happened, and all positive change. This is what our second year, it's the most beautiful facility, I still pinch myself when I walk in. That facility and the staff, Mrs. Johnson has, is just wonderful. I mean, it's just such a joy to walk into that every day. But I wanted to start, I tend to, I forget this in years past, I always brag about the program and all that we do, and I wanted to give names to why we are such a success. So, Kelly Richards is a full-time parent educator, Lori Lindsey's a full-time parent educator, Monica Burnett, Allison Pults, Lori Will, Sharon Cheryl are all part-time parent educators. I did lose one mid-year, but she was very much a part-time. She teaches kindergarten, you know, full, and then had her second baby, and you know, you just have to make choices. And I always encourage family first. I feel like I'm a hypocrite if, you know, if I don't do that. So, but it was a loss, but we're going to plow through this year and move forward. So, I wanted to start with that. The very first thing I thought would be really neat is, are we all tired of being top 10 by 20, right? And I'm sure you guys have read about the top 10 by 20. I wanted to read, I put it in your notes a little bit about, from our commissioner, she wrote this letter that stated, one of her points was, "All children deserve access to a high-quality early learning opportunity. The greatest period of brain development happens before age 5. The young years are crucial," just like Mr. Kraus was talking about. Man, if we could get in there young and help these families and see these concerns and these red flags, then a better chance we can help to stop those kinds of issues that we've been talking about. "We will remain committed to advancing voluntary early childhood education statewide and supporting parents of infants and toddlers in their role as their child's first teacher." And that was from our commissioner. So, boy, when I read that, you bet I had a, I did it. You bet. Then in there, it talks a little bit about, we are, it's so exciting, parents as teachers, although Farmington, this is our 36th year maybe? I mean, 36 years and it's still in, you know, all 50 states and seven countries, you never really, I felt like been a part of, a written part of a goal and plan. Well, we're a goal too. We're actually written in there, parents as teachers. And it talks about the affiliate level of quality standards will increase the information of that goal to the early childhood education. So, it just talks about how valid we really truly are. It still is mandated in the state of Missouri that we have the parents as teachers program. I wish it was mandated in all 50 states. I get to talk to all kinds of people, and I was talking to the MAC nurses and about childhood and early development and stuff. And long story short, one of the nurses went and called her sister who lived in another city, and heard of the program. And it just, it breaks my heart. And I said, "Well, it's not mandated in all states unfortunately, but we are part of Missouri's goal to top 10 by 20." So, I thought that was wonderful. The next section, I just wanted to let you know a little bit, I think people think, "Oh my goodness, they're just there to play with kids." You know, they go in and, "We're the toy ladies. We walk in with toys, we play with kids, and we leave." Well, the best job in the world, yes, but it's a little bit more than that. So, I put in your packet a little bit of the required documentation that DESI requires us to do, lots of documentation. So, guys, this is the new 2018 supervisor's manual that we just got, that's front and back. So, this is just the supervisor's manual of things that are required that we do, especially to be that affiliate. And I'm very proud to say we are one of the affiliate programs in the state. Not all are meeting those standards, but we're meeting them. So, and it changes, it's just like everything else, it changes. But as you look through there, you can see the family files are what my girls are responsible for every time they go on a visit. So, in there, I put a sample of the planning guide. Every visit they go on, they have to write this, it's a page and a little bit more, but a page planning guide, just like our teachers. We have the planning books, they have to have a planning guide. They feel it's just really, it has clubbed our, a little bit more intent. Like when we go in and do a visit, we're intentful, this is what we want to talk about. We talk about goals, family well-being, child development, community resources, all this is part of that plan that they have to do. They can take this in and write, take notes on. Then when they come back, they have to write about that visit. So, it's almost a repeat, but they have to repeat because you never know. I'm very proud to say I was on a visit, I'd like to think that, boy, I've got this all figured out after 22 years. But yeah, after about 45 minutes, I had a 2-year-old throwing toys at me, and I'm like, "Oh, I think it's time for me to go home." So, we know, we were talking, mom said, "See, that's what I'm talking about." And, you know, just being there and supportive with the mom and everything. But then we, they come back and they do the write-up, and then they have these milestones that they have to fill out, they have to check to see if the child is meeting all the milestones. This is excellent for us to make sure there's not gaps because we all know in education, if there's gaps, you might have a child that is at 3 years old, knows all the letters, all the sounds, doing all these things that you ask them, this really basic, like what do you do when you're thirsty? And they can't converse. So, Dr. Kraus knows very well, these are all red flags for us to see. And this milestone just helps us to really fill in those blanks to see what, if they need other intervention and everything. So, I just put a whole bunch of things in there. I have like all the recruitment, all the exit forms that we have to do, so if you guys are really bored, you know, look at those if you can. But this is just a sample of one family file from this year. This is just one family file and all that they do. They have the screenings, the screening summaries, all the write-ups, the planning guides, and things like that. So, I just kind of wanted to give you a sample of what that looked like. I don't think I included that, and I apologize, I made copies of, it's not, this is actually, this is my DESI Bible, this is the required things that we have to do for DESI. And I made copies, so if you guys want, you know, just let me know that this is what has to be made. So, they would come in and do a program visit, which we actually had last year, which did very well. So, I was very excited about that. Hugh, I think you're out of the woods for a little bit, they were wonderful, they just wanted to make sure all of our documentation is there and things like that. So, that's the DESI. Now, I have kind of two, well, I have a lot of losses, which is okay, but DESI and National Center. National Center also requires, actually requires more than DESI. So, if we're an affiliate, I'm not worried about DESI, we're going above even what their expectations are. So, we have 100 quality standards that we have to meet to be an affiliate program. The next section was the, show me the money, I might have been tired when I did that, sorry, but it was corny. But it talked a little bit about, I think I just showed you, like in the year 13, 14, we did 894 visits. And last year, we did, let me see here, it was 1,513 visits. So, I just figured, basically in five years, we had a 40% increase on visits. Now, with that being said, and where's Mr. Eaton? He knows that the struggle it's been is because in 12, 12, 13 is when they pulled in March, Bayline Idemus, and we went down from like almost, was it almost a $200,000 budget to $62,000? That's what we had. So, I was given this challenge, "Okay, you had this, pretend like you never did and make this program work," kind of thing. So, in that time, we had that 62, and in this five years, we doubled it, we're more than. So in that time, we had that 62, and in this five years, we doubled it, we're, we're more than doubled it. And it's been because Educate Foundation, educational foundation supports us, the school districts willing to gamble with me and say, the money's there, not everybody is using their pot of money that DESI guarantees. So we're going in there gambling and taking that money, we're, we're overachieving and hoping they pay us and... So far, they don't pay, yeah, so far, they, they've been paying us. So, and, and maybe it's selfish, but I feel, I just, for every child, but our kids, let's give them the best opportunity they can to learn. So, so really utilizing the funds that are there for us. So, um, that just kind of explains, I think it was a 34% increase in budget from 13, 14, but more of a 50% from that first year. I, I also, did you guys read the district comparisons? Did you, isn't that cool?
Yeah.
I won't mention any names or whatnot, but I, I just did that kinda for fun.
Pretty much everybody, but pretty much everyone.
Yeah, yeah. I just was so proud, I knew we were doing well and I thought, hey, this is public information. I'm just gonna go in here and I just pulled a whole bunch of districts around us and, I mean, even like Cape and that, I mean, we're guys, we're doing very, very well compared, compared, and I'd like to continue forward. I have great plans, I don't know if I'll ever retire, because every time I think I'm gonna retire, then I have these new goals I wanna set and, you know.
Yeah, can we have, you sign that?
Yeah. But, but yeah, there are so many, and I've got the team of girls to do it. I really do, I just have this awesome team. I called Dr. Kraus today and said, what do I do? The girls are wanting to work on snow days, can I, you know, kind of thing. They, they do, it's like, they're really, yeah, they're just, yeah, yeah. But they're, no, but we're not, we're just saying, no, you know, it's like, hey, school's canceled, that's the way we're going with it. So, but, and they're, they're wonderful to work with. But the very last thing I wanted to kinda end on, and then I'm gonna have, if you guys have any questions, is, um, we had a couple of parents last year, this was the last year, and they wrote some just thank yous. We get thank you notes all the time, it's just so sweet. But, um, they just wanted to thank us for doing different things. And I'm just gonna read real quick for those of you who didn't. One particular mom, we had found a hearing concern. And the mom had wrote this letter and it said, "The ENT stated that she had some minimal hearing loss in both ears and needed to have tubes inserted into her eardrums that can conduct the sound." This was after our screening and we had a concern. So after the surgery, the physician said that both of her ears were infected and looked as if they had been infected for quite a long time, even though she never complained of ear pain or any type of, uh, infective symptom. Thanks to parents as teachers for helping me get my child ready for kindergarten. And isn't that what we're there for? You know, she got tubes before kindergarten, she could hear that teacher and she was ready to learn. And that just said a lot. The next one was pretty lengthy and I can hardly read this one without getting emotional. I still can't because I, you know, talked to the parent. I mean, and this was a parent, this wasn't even my family, we did screen. But we have a parent hug you and cry, thanking you. And, and she talked about, it was a vision, a vision concern that we had. That spot vision machine, guys, has paid for itself over and over and over again. That spot vision showed a concern, we couldn't get a reading on her. We did it, we went back the next day, it's still gonna do it, so we talked to the parent. The parent went ahead and took her to the doctor, the specialist. The specialist said, this baby ended up having rheumatoid arthritis behind her eye and would have potentially gone blind. So she goes and she writes almost a two-page thank you note explaining the situation, but she ended it with, "Thank you again, parents as teachers for catching, for catching something. You may just have changed my baby girl's life forever." So why do we do this job? We do it for that, if we can just help that one child. And guys, we're helping countless children. I could, I could talk forever and ever about stories and stuff. So I just want to take this opportunity, I think last time I, I tend to cry, I was, every time that video, last time I showed, I swore I wouldn't at this time. It's just, thank you for your support and continued support. And, I mean, Dan has helped, we got another hearing machine, I mean, every, it's just the whole community and whole school we're just very blessed to be part of. So thank you guys very much. Do you have any questions or? And like I said, this is the DESI manual, if anybody just is curious and wants to. Anybody who wants to come on a home visit and really experience it, you just let me know. We can get that set up, we would love to have you guys anytime. My girls are used to people coming and watching them. So yeah, anytime, you just let me know for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Okay, Dr. Huster. Report on the pre-apprenticeship program.
I don't know why I can't really follow that up.
Yeah.
It is what it is. In addition, I'm losing my voice, so that's going really. I wanted to give everybody a real quick update. We've had, we've had some conversations previously about, uh, some opportunities we were pursuing in terms of putting together a pre-apprenticeship program in a partnership with MAC and the local workforce development boards. And that is beginning to look like it may bear some fruit. We're looking to see some applications come in from our kids. Uh, what we are looking at is putting together or moving forward with a program, um, in this coming school year in which our kids would receive 27 hours of college credit if they so choose, a Work Keys Completion Certificate, an OSHA 30 certificate, which would allow them to walk into nearly any employment in the county right out of high school, as well as stackable credentials in either welding or in industrial maintenance. And industrial maintenance, in our conversation with local businesses, has been the most frequently asked for certificates that we can provide. That's been a pretty significant deal. Uh, the plan moving forward, assuming we receive grant monies, uh, which Bev Hickman, one of the local liaisons through Mineral Area College, says is looking very good, is to utilize Perkins monies that otherwise may have gone to the Unitech program to pay for this program. There should be essentially a net zero or close to net zero cost in order to do this. And again, we're responding to the requests of a lot of the local businesses and the conversations we've had with them. And truth be told, we are actually providing a certificate and a kind of training that is entirely different from anything else in the county. So there's a lot of potential for good here. Just wanted to give you a very quick update, there's a, a board report written in the packet. But are there any questions that I can answer about this?
Sounds awesome. Good, great program.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Right, I need a motion and a second to approve the consensual items?
Submove.
And a second?
Subsecond.
All those in favor?
Call them on YouTube.
Any opposed? Now I need a motion to adjourn to close session.
Motion to adjourn to close session to discuss personnel pursuant to 610.021, paragraphs 1, 3, 13, and 14.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Freeman?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Alright, thanks everybody for coming.
Thanks guys, have a good night.